Welcome, I'd like to call this meeting to order. A vote for a special session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Some of them. Well, she carries.
I hereby move for council to appoint Tequisha Martinez as mayor effective February 7th, 2023. Mayor Martinez is being appointed to fill the vacancy and complete the remaining term created by the resignation of Mayor Emily N. Keller. Mayor Keller's resignation was effective January 31st, 2023 at 11:59 PM, and the council does hereby accept said resignation. By virtue of the appointment of the new mayor, she has resigned from her council member seat, and the council does hereby accept said resignation.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Hi.
As opposed? Well, she carries.
All right. If you could just raise your right hand in the front row if you need it, okay? Do Tequisha Martinez swear that he will support the Constitution of the United States, that he will be faithful, bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and in charter ordinances with the city of Hagerstown, and if you will, to the best your skill and judgment diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of mayor of the town of Hagerstown, Maryland according to the Constitution and laws of this state? Congratulations.
We can stretch out now.
No, we don't have any photos, no.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Those are tissues. Thank you. For those now, or have you? Can we just hit them? I think we could go through.
You gotta get out of, first we gotta do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do one picture after one.
I got to.
Okay.
Yep.
Just kind of saying, the approval of emergency ordinance is no longer necessary.
Okay, the approval of the, approval of emergency ordinance is no longer necessary, so we'll go into our work session. And first off, I have a proclamation for Neighborhoods First. Ashley Roush, community liaison and coordinator, and representatives from Dewey Central, North End Neighborhoods First Group, could you join me up front?
We've got more. Ashley, make sure you say who wants here, okay? Because there's more than just what we said.
Yeah, we have a few, a few more actual Neighborhoods First groups represented. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, they do great work in the community. I'll start here with Heather and Smith.
Can you use the podium so that, can you use the mic?
Just pass the mic around.
There he goes.
It's on, it's on.
There we go.
Brother Andy Smith, I'm a part of the Meadow Varner Group that's in the Johnson Street neighborhood here in Hagerstown, Maryland. We have an annual Neighborhood Day of First, I mean, an annual Neighborhood Day of Hope that we do in the fall, we hope that you join us.
I'm Mark Meany, I live on the 1300 block of Woodland Way. I'm with the North End Neighborhoods First Group, which we founded 25 years ago, and we have several annual events in cooperation with the city.
I'm Sean Flaherty, I'm with Dewey Central. I live on McKee Avenue. We're reorganizing this group, they haven't met since before COVID. Next Thursday, the 16th, we're having our first meeting at the Antietam Firehouse 2 on Potomac Avenue, I hope everybody can join.
Kathleen O'Connell, and I'm with Oak Hill West, and congratulations.
So, proclamation. Neighborhoods First, February 20, 2023. Whereas in Hagerstown, residents have the Neighborhoods First program for their community to create a venue for neighborhood-based citizen groups to engage and collaborate with local government and community building and peacemaking. And whereas Neighborhoods First provides an effective mechanism whereby the residents of Hagerstown, sharing common neighborhood identity, goals, and concerns, may form groups that are officially recognized by the city and work in partnership with the city to plan and implement neighborhood-based events and projects would contribute to the liability and sustainability of their unique communities. And whereas, February 2023 marks the 26th anniversary of the organization of Neighborhoods First Program. And whereas, the city of Hagerstown encourages our city residents to become involved and make a difference in their community. Residents may contact the Hagerstown Police Department to inquire about becoming involved in our Neighborhoods First Group. Now therefore, be it resolved, that with the support of mayor and council, I, Tequisha Martinez, mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize February 2023 to be Neighborhoods First Month. Thank you guys for all that you do.
Congratulations, Mayor, and I'm glad to be a part of one of your first acts as a mayor of the city of Hagerstown. We love our city and we do what we can to make it better for everyone.
Clean, safe, and quiet, that's what I want for my neighborhood. And I tell everybody that's moving to our neighborhood that they're moving to the best neighborhood in Hagerstown. Please help us keep it that way.
Being a new resident to Hagerstown, I think there's a lot of opportunity here. I think people do a lot of complaining, but if you're not even gonna show up and come to your neighborhood meeting or know your neighbors, it's kind of pointless. So, I'm hoping with Dewey Central, we can do a lot of cleanup projects, we can improve the city, and I really think it takes all of us to do our part, so.
And I see us as community-building and inclusive and embracing.
And these proclamations are signed by me, but we'll make sure we do other ones that have her name on them, because you don't want my name on them.
And next up, we have a proclamation for Black History Month. I asked Councilwoman Burnett to join me.
I hope you take photo pictures with the name.
Yeah, and, Mr. Fred Chavis, please come to the front. Am I saying it right?
Chavis.
Fred Chavis, he is the president of the NAACP.
We got it, we got it, Bob.
You sure?
Yep. Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of blacks in U.S. history. Americans have recognized Black History Month annually since 1926. And whereas, the theme of Black History Month 2023 is black resistance, building bridges and navigating barriers. And whereas, Black History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect and celebrate the contributions that African-Americans have made and their struggles for freedom and equality, therefore deepening our understanding of our nation's history. And whereas, the city of Hagerstown is proud to honor and recognize the history, contributions, and achievements of African-Americans in our community, state, and nation. Now therefore, be it resolved, with the support of the mayor and city council, I, T.R. Burnett, for the city of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize February 2023 to be Black History Month and encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating the diversity and character of our community and highlighting the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us.
I'm gonna keep it very brief.
I just wanna say, just to receive this proclamation, when history has been made today in Hagerstown for our first black mayor, it's monumental, so I just wanna say thank you. And let's move forward into all of our black children, continue to move forward, and know that you also can make history.
So, next up, we have, we have Fred Chavis, he's gonna come up to the front, Black History Month events. Could you guys stay put? Yes, please, yes, please. Hi.
Welcome. First time up here, huh? It'll be fine.
I'll just start it out for you. Fred was in and spoke to the former mayor and I a week or so ago, couple weeks ago, right before she left, talking with us about the events that he had for black, that were scheduled for Black History Month, he was doing through his nonprofit. And we thought it would be a good thing to come in and present to mayor and council and to the public what those events were and try to get some word out on them, so. Go right ahead.
So, I bought my wife today because our nonprofit is Liberation, Inc., and Liberation, Inc. was a vision between the two of us. So, I kinda just wanted her to go into the mission, and then I will go ahead and enlighten everybody on the events that we have coming up.
Yes, so I'm Bria Chavis. Liberation, Inc. is about, number one, exposing kids to more opportunities. So, we want them to be community-based, but we want them to also see things outside of their community so that they understand that there's more to life than what's just here, right? And so they can either bring that information that they know back to Hagerstown, or they can choose and live their life elsewhere, right? But the biggest thing is exposing them to new opportunities, so showing them that there's these amazing careers you can be a part of. There are these amazing places you can travel to. And just, once again, that exposure is the biggest thing that we want for the kids. Because being educators, we see that oftentimes, kids are unable to visualize or dream big because they've never been exposed to anything that has been larger than what's right in front of them. So, we want to make sure that they're dreaming big, and the only way to get them to dream big is if they're actually exposed to these amazing opportunities.
And so, a major part of what we do is mainly focusing on prevention. I think sometimes we focus on reacting to the state of things, and we wanna kind of address things by the root and build bridges for opportunity in a way that we're addressing the prevention. And so, one of the things we wanted to introduce was attacking black mental health in a way that really lets young people, and you know, actually, it's really no age group to it, but we want people to grow spiritually, but also in a way that's socially for their livelihood. And many times, we're not talking about black mental health, and I think during Time of Black History Month, it's a good time to address black mental health, black fatigue, and different things that we deal with when it comes to systemic oppression and other items that, you know, truly affect our black youth. They don't have many avenues to talk about that, and so we're introducing Free Minds, which is a program. And in Free Minds, basically, we wanna do after-school programs, different things like that, but also meeting kids where they're at. But again, it's also for young adults as well. You know, when we hear mental health, sometimes I guess we kinda shut down. And sometimes, when we hear mental health or mental health initiatives, it's not including those that look like us. And so, we wanna make sure that Free Minds is inclusive of all of that, to be able to address those root causes. But for events-wise, and Free Minds is gonna be introduced this month, that is something we're rolling out. But events-wise, we do have a black mental health program event starting on the 25th. This is the first of the series, which is black mental health in the church. And so, from there, we're gonna build a series of black mental health and activism, black mental health with youth and education, and it's just gonna kind of build from there. So, we wanna kind of attack all sectors of it. But the first event will be February 25th, Mental Forum, Mental Health Forum in Black History, I mean, for black churches, sorry, messed that all up. That's gonna start at 12:00 PM. And then on the 26th, we have our actual Black History Month event. We've been doing this for two years now, and so this is our third year that we've been doing it. Liberation, Inc. is gonna be sponsoring the entire event. We wanna bring about major speakers and different things, but we wanna honor black businesses. That is the theme for our Black History Month event this time, is to honor black businesses, promote them, also kind of prevent a message, show a message of how we can actually build true unity and what that really takes. You know, and just kind of build upon that. Also, for Liberation, we're planning another trip through bridges. On February 20th, I think we have planned to go to DC to take the youth to the National African-American Museum in DC. So, I think that'd be a great, you know, thing for people to experience. Know that we can experience everything in that short allotment of time that they give you. They give you two hours tops, and then they really want you out of there. But we're gonna try to, you know, really expose the youth to that. We also have a planned food drop that we're trying to plan, because that's something that we have been trying to do through Liberation is, you know, have food drops that are consistent, that meet people where they're at, whether we gotta take food to them, or however that may be. We do wanna also have a food drop this month, that was something that we had talked with as well. Right now, we're planning tentatively for February 18th. And so, if that changes, we will let everybody know. But please, we'll be sharing all of the events on Liberation, Inc.'s Facebook page, but we'll also send messages to the city of Hagerstown, since we're here today, to talk about those events that maybe they may be shared through those accounts as well. So, I think I touched on everything.
I'm sure she'll tell you.
She, she will, she will, she will.
Thank you for continually showing up, just nonstop. It's always, you know, you're always present, so thank you. And thank you for everything that you're doing this month and beyond, so you're just always showing up. I appreciate that.
Right on, thank you.
Do you have all the kids you need for the 20th trip, or you need more kids?
No, we need more kids, we need more kids. They allow you to do allotments of groups of six, but we did two groups. So, we're trying to get a van and different things to get as many young people as we can to be a part of that. If we can't get a van, then we're gonna be looking for possibly some chaperones or something to maybe drive. But we want, we want more kids, and we'll start advertising that.
I'll share, I'll share.
Right on, right on.
Thank you guys, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Western Maryland Consortium. They were unable to make it today due to some scheduling issues, so we're gonna have them in two weeks, come in.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Hagerstown Police Department, we have Captain Langston.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Captain.
I'm here on behalf of Chief Kifert, who's sick. We're here today requesting mayor and council approval for the addition of two new civilian positions. The positions we're requesting is for the watch center supervisor and a technical support specialist. The watch center, as many of you know, is our telephone reporting unit, which we stood up last year with part-time staff. The goal of that was to put civilians taking calls of minor nature so that our officers on the street could focus more on prevention and crime suppression. We've been managing it with supervisors filling in when they could, and we need, we need the addition of a full-time supervisor to, to deal with that. So, that's one. The technical support specialist is a combination of three different part-time jobs that have existed, and we're just combining it into one. The three jobs, one of them's a vehicle maintenance officer, one of them was a full-time training sergeant, and the other one is our purchasing agent or quartermaster. Those positions have not been filled in some time, and we've, again, been trying to utilize additional duties on existing staff to fill those duties. With the new laws and the new requirements and increased training that's mandated by the state, we have to focus on, on the training, so we don't run into liability issues like we've seen recently. So, these are both critical positions, and we're asking for your all's consideration and approval.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Captain. Wrap that up.
City Administrator.
Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank all the staff that participated, there you go, that participated in the APM Suites situation. I am very proud of how the city responded to that event. And it was nice to see the coordination that, that went on, and we're hopeful that there's gonna be a positive resolution to that, to that situation. So, again, I thank all staff, HPD, the fire department especially, Ashley Roush for everything she did, Tequisha for being out there helping to find relocation for these folks. And hopefully, we don't have to go through that again. Secondly, congratulations. I mean, I, it's just amazing where you've come. For as long as I've known you, which is not a very long time, but thrilled, I was thrilled when you, how you took to the, to the, to the position of councilman, or councilmember, how you took, how you, how you represented the city at MML events and out in the community, and I'm thrilled to see you in this new position. And whatever we as staff can do for you, we're right here. And I gotta get your grandson to get on my board again.
Councilwoman McIntyre.
I just wanna tell you, congratulations. I have been amazed by everything that you've brought to the table before you were in office and, and now. So, you're gonna do a very good job. And I will say it a million times, there are big shoes to fill. Mayor Keller did a phenomenal job, and in my mind, and I think that you're gonna be, you're gonna be just as excellent, so congratulations.
Councilmember Bruschi.
Congratulations, and I'm sure, and I'll have to tell you, we've got plenty of problems we've gotta deal with, and I look forward to focusing on them in the next two years and trying to get some possible.
Councilmember Burnett.
This is weird to look down this way. Congratulations to my former team counselor. Now the mayor of the city of Hagerstown is such an honor. I am gonna be with you all the way, have my support as always for many, many years, and I will now take direction from you. And I'm thrilled, congratulations again.
Councilmember Asher.
Sure, congratulations. Hi. I'm not paying attention.
Boy, you're talking.
It's like most other people, just lays over and falls asleep. So, I just wanted to make a comment, you know, because I can tell you as, as a councilmember that has supported the hotel ordinance legislation both times, and both times come up short in that effort, that it, it becomes a little difficult for these things to continue to repeat themselves in our community and then have to read comment after comment and hear comment after comment from folks that clearly are getting an increasing impression that we're not addressing this issue as aggressively and deliberately as we should. And I will say, you know, I've been on the losing end of that discussion twice, so I don't have the ability to bring that legislation back to this table. But I can't help but get the sense in every one of these occasions, when we read comments from folks, our citizens are not dumb. They know these things are happening. And when you read that a hotel, that its fire suppression system has been drained out, that it's heating the basement with a portable heater, that, that the alarm doesn't work, everybody knows, but I feel like the city. There's no way that the agencies and entities putting folks in there don't know that that's the case. Or the folks staying there don't know that's the case. Or the hotel operator doesn't know that's the case, or the businesses operating there don't know that's the case. Everybody knows and seems to be completely complacent in putting folks' lives in danger, and I will. And I will say it again, I would much rather deal with the issue of closing that hotel and finding an alternative location to place folks that have been put out than to know that a fire did start on the fifth floor and it was not, there was nothing operable, and instead of placing people in, in, in another place for the evening, we're placing people in the body bags. And, and it just, it can't be that way. That, that can't be how we handle that issue for the hotels frankly that we know, you know, are operating in this manner. And so I just put that out there to, to the body that, that, you know, we may give some consideration to bringing that back, because not only does it protect from those issues, but, you know, when I read things like folks, and I'm sure this happens, you know, pay cash, let's say, you know, that ordinance would have provided the requirement that the hotel operator, you know, log who's actually staying there, log the amount that folks are paying, you know, provide that information that protects those individuals that are now out that money, and provide that resource to the public safety personnel when they do respond to say, "We know which rooms are occupied and where we need to, to directly and most immediately remove folks." And so I just, you know, I appreciate everything staff did, but, but I just can't help in every instance here, feel like it is way more reactive than it has to be.
And so I, I agree that APM closing yesterday was pretty heavy. But I do thank the Hagerstown Police Department, Hagerstown Fire Department, and Ashley Roush for not just showing up and doing just the job that you are supposed to be doing, but actually caring. I've seen us rally together with partners, CAC, Goodwill, Potomac Case Management, and six people moved into permanent housing. That couldn't have been done without everyone working together. From our Economic Development Office that was out there to see that JP Minnow and the hair salon would be able to maybe find something, and then our city administrator as well out there. I appreciate the fire chief that walked me through, I think Adam.
Adam, yep.
Adam walked me through and showed me a lot of different things, and I was horrified. I was horrified as someone who works in nonprofit and also someone who sits in, inside the city government that we were housing people and children like that. And I wanted to be very, very, very clear that it wasn't the city's fault that the conditions of that hotel was like that, and that sometimes we do have to, we have to do what we have to do, not sometimes, all the time, in order to keep people safe. So thank you to everyone that was out working together on that. And thank you to my colleagues for trusting me. And I will look to you, very much so, for your leadership and direction as well. And with that, we are adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Council Rap. I'm joined by the brand-new mayor of Hagerstown, Tekeisha Martinez. First of all, Tekeisha, congratulations. Number two, how does that sound? Has, has that sunk in at all yet?
No, it's only been 30 seconds.
It seems that way, doesn't it?
Yes, it hasn't sunk in.
You know, this has been a bit of an ongoing process, because obviously, we knew that Mayor Keller was leaving. She submitted her resignation, became effective on the 31st of January. So what has this process been like? We, we, you know, the public hasn't had the opportunity to kind of go behind the scenes. I don't know how much you want to reveal about that, but it, it's been three executive sessions that got you to this point. So anything you... So anything you can give us some information on as far as that's concerned? How we got to this point? You know, the confidence that your colleagues have in you to place you in this position? Can you kind of just, you know, give me some sense of how all of that played out?
I think that the way that we have been working together since we were sworn in in 2020 was kind of the same type of process that we used for the last three weeks.
Okay.
We will sit down at the table and all have difference of opinions and different ideas and ways that we want to get those ideas completed. But one thing that about the five of us that I appreciate is that we will hear each other out. And so I will say, without disclosing anything, that, you know, I will say that it was not just a sit down and, boom, there it is. It's going to be Tiquisha. It was a process and we talked through it. We worked through it and I'd say we cried through it. So, yeah, it was a process.
And is it difficult when you're appointed to a position of, you know, such prominence in the city of Hagerstown? And you want your family to be part of that for you not to know exactly how this is going to play out? To get them here in time to experience all of this with you?
Yeah, it was a lot of anxiety because a couple of weeks ago, we did have a discussion where, I think it was two weeks ago, the week before our former mayor, Emily Keller, left, that we did kind of know that I had two votes. And so being a part of the body with five of us, the three of us need to make a decision for anything to happen.
Right.
And so we knew that there was two votes and it was the thing, could I vote for myself? Or what, you know? And there was, there was three of us that were, that wanted it. And that, you know, and I didn't feel like I was the best person for it. I just feel like because I began this administration showing up the same way that Emily Keller was.
Yeah.
And that I have a good understanding of how, how we can show up and be present and at the same time, get the work done, but be present too. And so I just felt like that I was the right person for that, so to speak. And it was difficult for me because I don't really normally advocate for myself. Being an advocate for everyone else, I had to, you know, muster up that boldness and the strength to kind of like advocate for myself and say, I'm qualified, which was hard for me. And I know people don't see that and think that, but it's very difficult for me.
Well, I think, and I don't mean to speak for you, I mean, certainly I'll allow you to address this, but from sort of an outsider's point of view, one who's not part of the elected body, to me, it seems like one of the most difficult things to do is to be elected to a position such as council member and then come in and have to learn on the job because that's truly the way that it works. So you had only been on the job for about two years.
Yeah.
And now all of a sudden, you're elevated to mayor. So one of the things you mentioned was Mayor Keller. You know, how much of an influence, how much of a mentor was she for you in getting you to where you are now?
That's a really good question. She was a huge influence. And like she said last week and during her last meeting, we have this, like, we're like the odd couple. And so I can say that it wasn't easy. We have different perspectives, we have different experiences, we are different generations. So it was, it was friction. However, once we got the understanding that we both wanted the same things and how we would get that meant that I needed to hear her and she needed to hear me. And so we worked through a lot of different differences and she was, she was, I watched her. So I came in with knowing that we had some conflict, but I came in and my, my agenda at that time was to serve her and was to just show her that I wasn't coming in and joining this elected body to try to sabotage anything that was, that she was trying to do, that I wanted to be a partner in it. And I think that there's a misunderstanding of how we can get those things together, you know? And the way that we reconciled, I'll tell you, the first night at MML, we got down there and we went on the beach and me and Councilwoman Burnett and Metamare and Councilwoman McIntyre came and it was like, we were on the beach, it was almost midnight. And it was almost, it was like that, right there, it was solidified.
Huh.
That we were going to support each other.
Yeah.
And it was okay to disagree and that we would do it in a more healthier way.
Yeah, you became galvanized in a way that you were going to put all of those small things aside in order to accomplish the larger vision.
Yes, yes, the bigger picture.
Right.
And I think that that's important, that we, that we are able to express that and show that in leadership, that differences do happen and it's okay to disagree, but it's just not okay for us to be disrespectful or hold up the things that could happen for the constituents of Hagerstown.
I know you said it's only been like 30 seconds and it's almost literally only been like 30 seconds that you've been mayor, but at the same time, have you thought about how you will handle this position? This new position that you're in, certainly different than being a council member. You no longer have a vote, but at the same time, now in large part, you're the face of the city. And you've seen how Mayor Keller did it. So what do you take from that? How do you make this Martinez, if you will?
I think that one thing that Hagerstown knows is that I'm going to do it my way. And so, but my way as in my presence and how I show up. And how she showed up will be different than how I show up. However, we did all set together, very early on when we were sworn in and come up with our missions, what our goals were going to be, and that's still the same thing. I was a part of the administration then and I agreed to that and that's what I would like to see happen. And so I'm going to pick it up from where she left off and make sure, you know, we want the field house. We, we want these things to come, come through to fruition. So, yeah, I'm going to do it in a way that is authentic to who I am. But at the same time, I'm going to make sure that, that we continue what, I don't feel like that, this is not a new administration.
Yeah.
You know, we already have our goals and stuff.
Yeah, it, it's not, but, but I sense certainly with the, the change at the top and then the trickle down effect that we'll need a new council member.
Yes.
The dynamic potentially could change a little bit. There had to have been some, some difficult discussions, as you alluded to, in, in this decision being made. But I think one of the things, at least from my perspective, when I look at it, you had three council members who were interested in this position. I think that bodes well for the city of Hagerstown, that you have people who are so engaged and want to be in that position. So my question to you then ultimately is, you know, when you said you needed to advocate for yourself, you needed to be a little bolder than you normally would be. Why did you think that you would be the right choice in this role?
I have, I have a good, I have the ability to be able to hear and understand people from different backgrounds, excuse me, from different backgrounds. I'm a trained mediator. I've been in conflict resolution for more than five years now. I feel like being born and raised in Hagerstown and being from here and gone through all the different things that I've gone through in raising my children here. I feel like this was the, this was the time for someone like, I've done a lot of work. I've done a lot of work and yes, mayor starts right now, but I've been an ambassador for the city for a very long time. And so I, I just, I feel like I'm just not the best person for it, but, I mean, the story behind how I got here is, is we, that says a lot about who we are.
It certainly does. And, and I don't know that, I mean, what exactly, or who exactly is the best person? You know, I mean, there's, there's no perfect person for that role. And I think like you said, I mean, just life experiences and everything else that's gone, that's gone along with that. And the fact that you're a Hagerstown native, I mean, this makes this a pretty special story in and of itself. But in terms of being able to get the job done, you're fully prepared for that.
I am, I am. I have gone to mediation with the chief of police. And I mean, I share that because I think that it's important to know that I don't just do work and show up and, you know, be unauthentic. There is, conflict isn't inevitable. We don't think alike, we don't all see, we haven't been through the same things.
Right.
But the importance is being able to sit down and hear each other, being able to sit with someone that thinks totally different than you.
Yeah.
And being able to say, okay, I understand what you're saying and I don't feel that way.
Yeah.
And I think that being a leader in this type of position, and that, that's one thing that Mayor Keller did well, is that she made it seem as though we all could do this. And I think that that's important. Because if you, if we are supposed to be selected for the people, by the people, then everyday people that live in our city should feel like they could come in and do this.
Right.
And I didn't know anything about water, sewer, trash, those different things, or the importance of having the right water pressure, right? Like, and so not knowing everything, I think it was getting more comfortable being, knowing that I don't know everything, but there's people around me that are specialists that do. And if you're humble enough as a leader to pull on people's strengths, then I think that that is what makes. So that's why I feel like me, I am a servant. And I just feel like I pull on people's strengths by being able to support them from behind. And I got and became a face by trying to stay from behind, if that makes sense.
What have you learned in the time that you've been in government? Because I sort of take it that when, when people run for a position such as council member or something like that, where you're going to serve the citizens of a town or a city, you have all of these ideas, man, I want to change this, I want to do this, I want to do that. But then you get into the position and you sort of come to an understanding of why those things haven't quite happened yet. And then you kind of have to plot out your course and how do I get there? Or can I get everyone else interested in what it is that I need to do? So overall, what, what have you learned to this point? And, and how do you continue to get to where you would like to be with, you know, the body now sort of following your lead?
I have learned so much about the, the importance of giving and taking. And also if this is a place with over 40,000 people in it, then only a certain percentage think like me, look like me, have been through.
Sure.
And I mean, it gets smaller and smaller when we go into the details of who I am, right? And so I think that it's important, I've learned, and it's very important to be able to hear and work with people that, like Bob, right? And I say like Bob because we're total opposites, but I respect Bob's leadership. I appreciate his experience. And with him being totally different, he, his voice is just as important as my voice because there are people that have, there's a percentage of people that have been through what Bob has been through and have been through what Kristen has been through and Tierra. And so, you know, I think that sometimes we think, oh, that Tierra and Tiquisha are both black women, but we don't, we're two different generations. And so what I learned is that you come into this thing and you think, oh, I'm coming in, I'm going to get what, you know, everything for, for the people that voted me in, but there's still, I only had 5,600 votes.
Yeah.
There's still 35,000 people that need represented. And so what I learned is that we have to sit at the table and be able to work through a lot of different, and things don't move quick in government.
I'm sure it's not lost on you that you are the first black mayor of the city of Hagerstown, female or otherwise. What does that mean to you? I, I think, you know, from the outside, you try to, you know, put your own spins on that or think, hey, it means this or it means that, but, but what does it mean to you personally?
I, it means so much, just with the last name Martinez. And so I found out so much about my grandfather, who, the story that I was told was my grandfather came to Hagerstown in the early 60s and his last name was Newman. And, but he was, he, he was a Cuban stowaway. And so he came to Hagerstown, he married a woman with seven sons.
Wow.
I know, right? He is a Boy Scout, he was the Boy Scout, they called him Chief Red Pony. And of the only colored Boy Scout back then with the Mason Dixon. And so it means a lot because as I got into politics and learning, I found out so much about my grandfather. I found letters to the editor that he wrote from 1963 all the way up until, I was born in 78, he passed away in 83. So he wrote these letters to the editor. And so knowing that my mom is the, is his only daughter and last name Martinez.
Yeah.
And knowing that my grandfather did as much work as he did as reading poems at, at churches and he helped with the boys, he helped do, he was a carpenter, he helped build the Boys Club.
Wow.
Like all of those things and being able to uncover who my grandparents was, this means a lot. For me, this has shown that, that the inheritance, no matter what, my grandfather, this was like the trajectory already set out for my life. And so for his name to be hanging, for his name to, to, to carry on, I'm his oldest blood grandchild. And I have four daughters and one son, but I have five grandsons. And so that excites me that I have grandsons that, you know, so it means a lot. It means a lot to show my daughters that everything that we went through.
Yeah.
Everything, like it, it didn't stop anything.
Right.
And that Hagerstown really, really is our home. And, and sometimes we may be hurt at home.
Right.
Sometimes we may not be comfortable at home. Sometimes we may need to clean up the homes. Sometimes we need to throw things out and put new things in, but it's home.
Yeah.
You know, and so.
Wow, that's, that's special. And we'll just, I guess, end on this note. I know you were telling me before we started recording that, you know, it was a little bit of a scrambling drill to get members of your family here. Could, could you recount that for the listeners and the viewers?
Yeah, well, we kind of knew, but we didn't know because anything can happen in government. And so it was, I text my daughters and I was texting them and they just gathered up. And so I think there was, was there four grandbabies? I have seven grandbabies, I feel like there was four grandbabies. But anywhere that we enter, because I have four daughters and seven grandchildren and we are tight, we are close.
Yeah.
Anywhere that we enter, it's, just looks like a lot of us. And so, and then too, with my grandbabies, they don't, they, they don't, they don't understand, of course, in a young age. And so it's kind of like, this is exciting, but at the same time.
Yeah, they're not really understanding exactly what it is or the magnitude of it.
Yes, and then my sister Nina, Nina was here and she picked up my mom and she told my mom that, um.
I'd love this.
She told my mom that they had to hurry up and get to City Hall because she had a job offer and that there was like something about she needed three votes, like, I mean, the, the story, I don't want to misquote on.
Right.
But she told my mom that it was about a job and that there was three votes on it and something. So my mom came in and had no idea.
Wow.
She had no idea what was about to happen. And so whenever heard the mayor, you could hear my mom like, and then ball crying. And so it was awesome and it was like 30 minutes in between us because we were really trying to decide whether we were going to wait till next week, announce it today and then doing the swearing in next Tuesday.
Yeah.
And so it was some scrambling around.
Wow, wow. Just an incredible day for you and I think the, the city of Hagerstown overall. Great to have, you know, a mayor in place once again. And again, congratulations that it's you. And now we'll work on getting a new council member.
Yes.
So, yeah, the dominoes continue to fall.
Yeah, I think it's also cool that me and Councilwoman Burnett get to see and be a part of this in our first time in politics. We, we've seen a mayor resign, I mean, to be able to experience with that process. And then the process of getting a new council member, like, wow, that's a lot. We came in and COVID. And so we didn't come in and, you know.
Yeah, this has been anything but normal.
It has not been normal, Wes, it has not been normal. I mean, we didn't even campaign normal.
Yeah.
And so.
But, but look where we are now.
Look where we are.
So it's pretty amazing. Well, I, I think you, you need to go let this sink in a little bit, celebrate, let those emotions come out a little bit because I, I, I think you've done a good job of, of holding them in, I think, to this point. So let you go enjoy all of that and look forward to you presiding over the body for nearly the next two years and we'll, we'll see what you do after that. Any, any aspirations at this point? And even before this happened, to look toward continuing this career in politics for you?
Yeah, so when I first filed and got elected, I said that I wasn't, I just wanted to do it.
Yeah.
And that I, because it, being a person who born and raised here and has as many children as I have here, my children didn't sign up to be the public figure. my children didn't sign up to be the public figure and they didn't sign up to have this thing dialed in on their lives, everyone looking at them. And so I said that I was only going to do, you know, for years and kind of, but then I got involved and within the first year I said, oh, okay, to make anything really, really happen. And I am a person that I listen first. I know I, I'm a poet and I speak and all of that, so people think that I'm a talker, but I really, really listen and I watch. And I knew after a year that I needed another year to just listen. And then I thought, well, wow, if I need another year to listen and then after that, the two years is up, I'm going to have to file to run again. And so I did know after a year that I was going to file to run for city council again because I feel like the initiatives and the things that I would like to see happen is going to take more than.
Takes more time to see them through. And, and I do remember when I interviewed you shortly after you were elected to the council that you said, you know, I'm an introvert. And you're like, most people aren't going to believe that at all. Well, I, I was a little taken aback because I know that you have, like Mayor Keller had, a loud voice at times, especially when, when it needs to be. I think you use that, you know, to your advantage and, and when it, it needs to happen, you've got it inside you. But for the most part, like you said, I mean, you're, you're a listener and, and one who sort of holds back until that needs to happen.
Yeah, yeah, there's usually, and I, and I attribute this to the spirit within me. I will be quiet if there is, like, there's like a, it's like my heart starts beating and I teach like feelings of, of different things, like when you're feeling sad, overwhelmed and all of that. And so things start happening and I know that I have to speak. But I think that a lot of times the look on my face, people misunderstand that, but it's the uncomfortableness of having to, to speak. And so I really, really, really have to, to say that I don't even know sometimes, you know? And I will try to be quiet because that's the natural thing for me, is to serve, to be quiet, to listen. Listen, my favorite thing to do, Wes, is stay home, do laundry and cook dinner. I mean, that's what I love to do and, and, and serve my children. And so it, this is different.
Yeah, very different because those things are not on the, the agenda for the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, but she has a whole other life too. And that's one that we'll let her get back to. But Mayor Martinez, congratulations. And thanks for spending some time with me and just sort of letting everyone out there know how this is impacting you, what you feel about things and, and what they should kind of expect. I'm not sure that you know the exact course yet, but certainly there was a strategic plan that was laid out, as you said, you know, you're going to kind of pick up the mantle from here. So we're, we're in for this ride for the next nearly two years with you at the helm. And again, congratulations.
Amen, I look forward to working with you, Wes.
Appreciate your time once again and thanks to all of you for watching. It's a new era in Hagerstown with Mayor Martinez. I'll see you next time on Council Rap.